The City of Scranton zoning hearing board will not come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Marks?
Here.
Ms. Newcomb?
Here.
Chairman Gattens?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. After you be sworn in, state your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone given testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning office. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111i of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension.
Any remarks?
Yeah, I have a remark. Jack, our friends over at G M G on 535 North Kaiser, they're back up to upwards of thirty cars, and I think we only approved twenty at the last meeting?
I think it was twenty-five.
Twenty-five? Well, they definitely have more than twenty-five. Oh, and our friend's tent is still up, just so you know.
Is it full of merchandise?
This is gone.
Fair enough. I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
And Jack, one more. The daycare on Washburn Street? Has there been any follow-up as far as their failure to pave the parking lot across the street?
Yes, I did speak to Abraham Prosper, who is the person in charge over there. And if you look at the variance, it does not say that they have to pay, but they said they have, it says that we have to, they have to get it ready for parking. And they're under the impression that they don't have to pay, but now they did bring modified in and rolled it, and it looks much better than it did. But there's a dispute.
Is there any way we can go through the transcripts in that meeting? Because I know-
I don't have transcripts. I would have to order them, which I'd be happy to do.
Because I know for a fact, we stipulate that that had to be paved.
I too remember that as well.
Part of the conversation, it was, I think it was in September, they were here, and we knew it was late into the season. And we gave them an April-May timeframe to start that progress.
And I do remember that as well, but they're claiming that they didn't, they didn't have to pay, but it was up to them. And they just had to make it more suitable for parking, which they claim they did.
Can we order them transcripts and follow through on that?
Yes, sir.
In addition to that, they're not using it as a parking lot anyway? They're just still parking and letting out and dropping off and picking up on Washburn Street itself?
I put them on notice about that, and again, they claim that's not the case, but I certainly don't disbelieve what you're saying either, Carrie. I'll certainly follow up with the parking lot as well. I have to go back to them, too, because they were supposed to put a cut for a driveway to access that lot, and they never did. So people that are using it are pulling over the curb and the sidewalk to enter it. So that has to be corrected as well.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure he took pictures a couple of times and sent them to you of pick-up and drop-off.
Yeah, she did, yeah. But they claim that that's an isolated situation, that everybody usually parks across the street. Now, the time that I was over there, when I was arriving, there was people parked and discharging from the street there. So I'm sure you're probably more correct than not. But I guess I could write him another letter, but short of starting anything up legally, I don't know what else we could do.
On the same note, you know, we have a lot of people come before us with different cases, as you see tonight, but we approved the property back in Prospect Avenue, right near Brook Street. This is going back a few months ago, maybe close to eight, nine months ago, that we requested the same thing, that they maintain the parking lot across the street, they pave and everything. I went by there the other day, and their work was top-notch. You know, I mean, it felt good to see someone follow through what we asked them to do, without having to chase them. But they paved that parking lot, they lined it, they did landscaping throughout the parking lot, and it fits right into that neighborhood. I mean, it blends in with the work they did, so.
What I would hope, maybe in the future, if we're going to approve a project with the contingency of parking, paving a parking area, that it be very, very clear, because, you know, sometimes they argue to me that all we wanted them to do is provide the parking. It doesn't necessarily mean pave it. But I think it has to be really clear that when we're talking about using this parking lot, if the board feels it has to be paved, it has to be very clear. It makes my job a little easier to try to enforce it.
And that's what we're here for, so.
Here, here.
Jack, can you do the attestments, please?
Oh, yes. I, Jack Sweeney, zoning officer for the City of Scranton, do solemnly swear that I posted the following premises with the notice of a zoning hearing for tonight's hearing. The properties are, as are tonight's hearing, are 1800 North Washington Avenue, 839-841 Madison Avenue, 305-311 North Main Avenue, 715 River Street, 138-140 South Fillmore Avenue, 519 South Irving Avenue. The properties were posted on November 5th and 6th, 2018. The first agenda item, 1800 North Washington Avenue, has been withdrawn, so if there's anybody in the audience here for that, just so you know, it will not be heard tonight. It will be heard at a future date, possibly next month, possibly next year. Thank you.
Call the first case, please.
That'll be the Advocacy Alliance, 839/841 Madison Avenue.
Um, Jack, I noticed that on this application, it says C Exhibit C, and there is no Exhibit C.
On the Advocacy Alliance?
Yes. It's right on the second page, it says Exhibit B, but on the front, it says C Exhibit C, so we have no, we have no neighbors, no nothing.
Oh, that was the list of property owners, which I didn't bother to include, because I take care of that.
What was that?
That was the list of property owners, surrounding property.
Yeah, so we don't have, like, so we don't have any of that information, okay. Okay, because it says for us to see Exhibit C, so.
Yeah, I personally did each one of them.
Okay, good. I was just confused. Thought it was missing.
My mistake.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Could you please state your name and address and spell your name, please?
My name is Joseph O'Brien, O apostrophe capital B R I E N. My address is Columbia Street in Scranton. May I begin?
Proceed.
I'm an attorney with Oliver Price &amp; Rhodes. I'm here representing the Advocacy Alliance. The Advocacy Alliance has a contract to purchase property at 839-841 Madison. That's the corner of Madison and Myrtle. Property is owned by Madison Jefferson Realty, and the copy of the real estate contract is attached to the application. The Advocacy Alliance is a not-for-profit corporation that provides services to people with intellectual disabilities. They own about nine properties in that area, office buildings where about eighty people work. They have seventy-two parking places in the neighborhood now, one on a separate lot and the rest behind their various other buildings. We're seeking here a variance to use this property for a parking lot, to add twenty new parking places. The plot plan is attached to the application. You can see it there where the twenty parking places will be. We believe that this is the highest and best use of the property. There's a need in the neighborhood for off-street parking, and there's a need because Advocacy Alliance is a growing business, serving the community, providing employment and services to those in need. And they have eighty people working there and seventy-two places. This will allow parking places for the other employees who presently don't have one, and it'll also provide parking places for business visitors who come to the Advocacy Alliance. No clinical services are offered there, but they do have people who visit them for various other business and nonprofit corporations. The property's been vacant for about ten or twelve years. My inspection, my view of it, I think that this is probably the best use of it. It's in the best interest of the community. I don't think you could stick a house in there in this day and age. I don't know that anybody would be interested. There's one neighbor, if you'll see, who's, it's right there, if you look at, on Myrtle Street, there's a neighbor there, Mr. Dorman Waters. We've spoken with him. He has no problem with this plan. He lives just west of the parking lot on Myrtle Street. And so that's what our proposal is. We have two witnesses here. We have Mr. Alex Hazouri, who's the chief executive officer of the Advocacy Alliance, and he can answer any questions you have about his intentions and their operations. We also have Patrick McLean, who's a civil engineer, and he can discuss the plot plan. And we are happy to be here at the very beginning of the meeting, and we commit to you that, of course, this parking lot will be paved in accordance with your wishes.
I have a question, maybe you can answer, attorney, or maybe someone else following up. What's the distance from the center to that parking lot?
The nearest building is, Patrick?
Approximately seventy-five feet. To the nearest building.
No, no, how far from the advocacy's building to that parking lot?
Seventy-five.
Okay.
Advocacy has nine buildings, it's seventy-five feet.
Okay.
So, just so we have the right record.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Could you please state your name and address and spell your name, please?
Patrick McLean, M C L A I N E. My address is 211 West Street, Elmhurst Township, Pennsylvania.
Can I just ask, where is this location that's seventy-five feet from the parking proposed?
Can I point it out to you?
No, just tell me the address. You could just tell me the address.
716 Myrtle. So, our property, it is shown on the map, the first one that's called out is Advocacy Alliance, to the left, if you're looking at the plan, going down Myrtle. The one in between is the one property that's owned by residential, and as Attorney O'Brien mentioned, Mr. Hazouri did speak with the owner, and the owner is in favor of the proposed project.
As for the, I'm just looking for the entrance and exit to and from the parking lot on, I would assume would be on Madison and not Myrtle?
The driveway for vehicles will be on Madison, and you'll be able to walk up there as well. There will be a sidewalk that will exit out onto Myrtle Street, which will provide quick and easy access to-
The only reason I question this is because I drive, I work up the street from Myrtle Street, up at the school, and there stands hundreds of kids every single morning waiting for a bus, and I just worry that it might become a traffic, a safety issue with the children, because every single block up Myrtle Street, there's a bus stop from, to two different schools, or maybe even three. I just worry that it might become a safety issue, that's all.
Well, there's no exit, egress or re进入 from Myrtle Street, it's all from Madison.
No, I'm just worried about the people that might enter the parking lot coming from Myrtle Street, turning onto- No, 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 turning onto, oh, that's right, it's a one-way street. Yes, okay. But leaving, that's, that they could do.
So as I previously mentioned, the closest property of Advocacy Alliance is approximately seventy-five feet. The next closest is about a hundred and fifty feet away. I know there is a requirement in the ordinance that a parking lot needs to service, the property's services need to be within two-hundred feet. Just to extend a little bit further on the civil side of the project, that is proposed parking lot will be paved. We will meet all requirements of the Scranton subdivision land development ordinance in addition to submitting to the planning commission. We'll have to submit to Lackawanna County Conservation District for erosion and sedimentation pollution control. We will have to accommodate the Scranton Sewer Authority, Pennsylvania American Water Company requirements for storm water control, which will be some underground tension in connection into their system. We will, sometimes in a situation like this, a concern is landscaping. This plan proposes to meet all required landscaping of the subdivision land development ordinance as well as zoning ordinance. In addition to more, we're actually going to provide more space required for landscape buffers than is required in the ordinance.
I have another question. The attorney mentioned that the parking lot would be for the Advocacy Alliance as well as any other nearby business that may or may not need off-street parking? Is that, did you say that? Did you mention that?
No, what I said was that the Advocacy Alliance is not a clinical service, so they don't have patients coming in, but they do have other business visitors like salespeople or attorneys or-
So subcontractors, okay. And what time does the Advocacy Alliance, I'm just, I go, I just worry about the traffic concerns. What time does the Advocacy Alliance open?
Nine to four-thirty.
Nine to four-thirty, okay, well, nine to four-thirty, okay, that's in and out of school hours. That's all.
Thank you.
I have one more question. Your sight line, the sight distance from that driveway to that corner doesn't meet specifications?
It's hard for me to tell right now, but I will confirm that it does, as required in the subdivision land development ordinance?
If I'm looking at our Section 803(c), Section C, it gives us the site triangle. I'm just looking from the center line of your driveway, the distance, I just want to make sure that it does fall within that.
Yeah, I looked at that as well, Bob, and I went out to the property. I feel it's, it fits the guidelines.
Okay. The center line of this driveway, as shown here, is approximately seventy-five feet from the center line of Myrtle Street, if that's your question?
Yeah, I think it's-
Yeah. I didn't see any measurements for it, I was just questioning.
The neighbor that's next to this parking lot, you said you talked to them and everything, and they were okay with the parking lot?
Swearing. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? I do. Could you please state your name and address and please spell your name? Alex J. Hazouri, H A Z Z O U R I, 919 Electric Street, Scranton.
Alex, explain the identity and the-
Where's that microphone? Oh, Alex, I'm sorry, Mr. Hazouri, you have two microphones on your table. Would you mind giving your attorney one if he's going to question, so he can be heard?
I'm just asking Alex to, I'm asking Mr. Hazouri to give the zoning board the name of the neighbor and the circumstances and substance of his discussion with him.
I contacted, was it close to that microphone? It's not working on television.
Is it better than the screen? Next thing you talk?
And we'll, I'll pass it back and forth. Good, thanks. I contacted Mr. and Mrs. Dorman Waters, who live in that house on Myrtle Street. The address must be 718 or 720. Our Advocacy Alliance property on the other side of the alleyway is 716. And Mr. Waters unequivocally stated to me that he has no opposition and is in full support of any land development in terms of parking for that lot.
The only thing I would recommend, you're probably going to do some landscaping next to his home and stuff, I would think a nice fence would probably be nice for that property owner not to have to look at that parking lot. I mean, how do you feel about putting a fence up on the property?
And I can easily commit to that. As an example, the Advocacy Alliance owns eight buildings, seven buildings on the 800 block of Jefferson and the building on 716 Myrtle. One of our buildings on the odd side of Jefferson, as we bought each building, we put up a white vinyl fence for the one tenant, one land homeowner behind us, and as we bought each building around her, we built for her a white vinyl fence, so her whole yard is fenced in. We would easily commit and definitely commit to doing that for Mr. Waters and his wife. Thank you. I know you touched on landscaping before. What's your plans for landscaping surrounding the outer edge of this lot? I'm sorry. Patrick McLean again. So, I think the ordinance requirements are eight feet. We could provide on both sides, almost fourteen feet on both sides, meeting, and with the landscaping, I know there's height of bushes and density requirements, we'll absolutely meet all the requirements of the ordinance for landscape buffers. Is there going to be lighting in this parking lot? I'm not sure at this time. If there is for lighting, we will, as part of our land development process, we will have to submit it to, the photometrics would show all the lighting spread up as across the property lines to make sure it doesn't spread into the neighbor's property. Well, just out of curiosity, what would make you decide to put lighting in there? I mean, if you're coming for us tonight, what's going to change your mind to put lighting in that parking lot?
I think the Advocacy Alliance has previously indicated, Joe O'Brien again, is only open from eight to four-thirty, correct, Mrs.?
Nine to four-thirty.
Nine to four-thirty. We don't really have night hours, and so I think, and sometimes the neighbors don't like the lighting, and so I think it would be a question of discussion with the neighbors and the planning commission. But I don't believe there'd be really any intention to put lighting in unless public authority really required it.
I'm not saying you need to, I was just wondering, you know, if down the road you're looking at it, like, what would change your mind to put it in there? My question was, so. I mean, it's fine, you answered it, I'm happy with your answer, so. Another item which might cause us to want to put lighting is if our staff who are working on Jefferson Avenue or Myrtle in the winter time, even though our hours are nine to four-thirty, most staff, many staff stay till five o'clock till their work is finished. So if they felt any type of safety concern, we would absolutely put lighting.
That would, I think, satisfy the need for their, to get into the parking lot, but getting up to, like, leading up to, like, from Jefferson, if there's no street lighting, they're still going to be in the dark until they get to your parking lot. Do you see what I'm saying? It's, I mean, from across the street, it's fine, there's, I know there, every other pole has a new light, I just, walking from Jefferson up the hill to Madison, there might not be lighting on the street. I don't know, I don't usually go there in the dark, so I don't know what the lighting situation is on the street.
I'm sure we would definitely investigate all options with regards to making our staff feel comfortable. We do own 716 Myrtle, which abuts the alleyway. We could put lighting that could shine out into the alleyway so folks could walk up that way or work with Mr. Waters, but we would do everything necessary to make our staff feel safe.
I understand, I'm just concerned at night, walking up Jefferson to Madison in the dark. Your parking lot having lighting, that's, I mean, that's great, but getting there, that's, that was what my, my concern was.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
I make a motion with a condition for the fence on the property owner's side where the house is.
I'll second that motion with the contingency.
Before we go any further, just one more question, and the fence, that black fence that's around there, is that going to stay surrounding the parking lot, or are you going to remove that fence?
I would recommend it's basically kind of a nice fence. A lot of make some cuts for the pedestrian access to the driveway. I would recommend-
It does look nice in that neighborhood, that fence does, that's my question, so.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes, by a vote of five to zero, you've been approved. Good luck with your project.
Agenda item number three, Crown Properties, 319-321 North Main Avenue.
Jack, are we just doing the number three right now, or are we combining these?
I was just going to say, number three and number four are kind of related.
Why don't we let the testimony go for both?
I'm going to defer to attorney to me to see, do you think it's easier to just do both together?
I think so. We've been here before, so I don't know if everybody's familiar with the application, but they are somewhat interrelated. For the record, I'm Attorney Donna DeVita. I represent the applicants in both cases. The applicant on one request for a special exception is 305-311 North Main Realty LLC. On the second application, the applicant is Crown Properties and Realty LLC. The respective applicants own the properties as designated on the application. Obviously, 305-311 owns property at 305-311 North Main Avenue in Scranton, and Crown Properties owns the 319-321 property. I think maybe it's the easiest to do the Crown Property application. We were here back in May applying for a special exception to construct apartments on the second and third floor of an existing building. Those second and third floors had been vacant for many years, we don't even know how long they were vacant. Crown Properties purchased the property and desired to construct apartments on the second and third floor. One of the issues that arose with our request for a special exception back in May of 2018 was the need for off-street parking. This property is in a C N zone. It permits commercial enterprises, neighborhood commercial enterprises along North Main Avenue. It only allows residential apartments via special exception application, and that would require, given the number of apartments, my client's desire to construct on these second and third floors, he would need nine parking spaces, correct, Sergio? At that point in time, we did not have any off-street parking available. We had considered a number of options and unfortunately could not offer any parking spaces. So at that point in time, the zoning hearing board took a vote and denied our request for a special exception. In the interim, my client, 305-311, who has the same member of the LLC, Sergio Hardy, I don't know if I'm pronouncing your name, I always butcher it, but Sergio, is a member of the LLC that is Crown Properties and Realty LLC. He is also a member of 305-311 North Main Properties. So he just closed today on the purchase of the property at 305-311 North Main Avenue. And I have to amend our application. I represented that he wanted to use the second and third floors of that 305-311 Main Avenue property for apartments. My client reminded me there's only two stories in that building, so he only intends to use, obviously, the existing second floor. He doesn't want to construct another floor on that, so we would amend our application to reflect that fact. The apartments are already in existence. He's not constructing new apartments on this second application. He's not reconfiguring them, he's cleaning them up. When I say renovating, painting, installing new kitchens, whatever would be required to get them modernized, but he has no intentions of doing any constructional interior modification of what exists. The 305-311 property has commercial businesses on the first floor. It also has an adjacent parking lot that has a total of sixteen, sixteen parking spaces there. Now, as the board is aware, there's no requirement for off-street parking for neighborhood commercial enterprises in either of these buildings, so we don't have to worry about that. There is a requirement for the apartments my client intends to construct. So we now have a property that is less than a hundred feet away, I don't even think it's that far apart, that he will be able to dedicate parking spaces, nine parking spaces, for the 319-321 property- three twenty-one property to service the residential apartments. I also, since he just closed on the property today, we have a copy of the deed. It has not been recorded, closing just occurred earlier this afternoon, but we do have a copy of the deed showing that his, the LLC three oh five, three eleven North Main now owns that property. We also have a signed lease agreement between both LLCs stating that there will be dedicated parking spaces at three oh five, three eleven to service the residential apartments at three nineteen, three twenty-one, and I hope I'm not getting these numbers confused. There will be seven dedicated identifiable spaces. We don't think that will be a tremendous problem if the rentals, we anticipate the tenants working, obviously, we're gonna rent to people who could pay the rent there, so the lot won't be overburdened with commercial customers at the businesses at the three oh five, three eleven building. And when those businesses close up and the residents come back, or come home, I should say, we anticipate that there should be a nice flow and not a lot of problems with parking. So at this point in time, I have the deed, and I do have the lease agreement between the two LLCs reflecting their agreement on the rental of the parking spaces.
Just a question, let me ask you a question before you bring them up. The parking lot that you're talking about, is that owned by the vault, whoever owns the vault?
No.
Okay, that's why I lost you a little bit.
I'm sorry, that property, that parking lot is actually owned by three oh nine, three eleven. That is adjacent to that building, and that lot is included in the sale to three oh five, three eleven North Main Avenue.
So who uses that lot now? Does the vault use that when they're open? No?
Oh, he, um...
Yeah, is this the lot that's, is this the lot that's in the corner of La Cuanan Main?
Wait, 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 I can't answer too many, go ahead, Dan.
I just wanna say.
Yes, sworn in.
I just wanna know if the lot that you're talking about, while he's getting up, is the lot on the corner of La Cuanan and Main? Because you don't, it says C attached, but you don't have...
No, I'm sorry on that, I'm sorry. Let Sergio be sworn in, and he could explain it a little better for you.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name, and your address, and spell your name, please.
Sergio Alaharde, E L E J A L D E, two sixteen North Lincoln Avenue, Scranton, PA one eight five zero four.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, to answer the question with regards to the parking lot, the vote has its own dedicated parking lot, and it's actually painted with a yellow line at our property line. One of the issues that the current, well, the previous owner of three oh five, three eleven, had was that the vault always parks on her property. So she told me pretty much today, good luck, but put up a gate, figure it out, and you'll be fine. So I'll do whatever I have to do on my end, so that they can respect our property line. And, yeah, the property comes with sixteen spots in the rear, along our property line, and it also has nothing to do with the, I think it's M J M Plumbing, that has their location next to the vault on the Lafayette Street side. So they have their own entrance and their own exit through there. So we would share an entrance on the side for the vault and our property, but there's just that one sprayed yellow line that, you know, pretty much mediates both properties at the current.
My concern with that setup is naturally that if the vault has an event going on, that your tenants all of a sudden have nowhere to park. I mean, it's, I know it's stuff because it's only a yellow line, and I know I cross the yellow line and get a parking spot.
I understand, but I'll put up a gate if I have to, or, you know, and I plan, and my intention is to go there next door, introduce myself, let them know, and, you know, just try to play nice with everyone, as, as much as I can. But that's the situation with the parking.
And with regard to these dedicated spaces, it's not too difficult, I know that's a paved area, it's not dirt or anything like that. They could be individually marked, reserved for, and then put the building address on it. So everybody, whoever's in three nineteen, three twenty-one apartment, whatever, A, they will know they have a dedicated space. Obviously, I think Sergio wants to be a good neighbor, he's invested quite a bit of money in the acquisition of these properties. He represented to me, told me that he already applied a permit to improve the, the front of the three nineteen, three twenty-one structure, new windows, new roof, the facade, and that permit, I believe, is for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So he's not doing it on the cheap. We have our architect here, who already has designed, and we submitted plans in the past. I would just reference the board's attention to the May, I think it was the May eighth zoning hearing, that we had the previous application for three nineteen, three twenty-one. Costs a lot of money to get them reproduced. We have no changes, it's exactly what was previously represented to the zoning hearing board. Now we have parking spots, so, and that's what we told, we were told we needed. So Sergio went out, bought property, and he has parking spots on that. So let me supply you with the lease.
I have a question for Sergio. That lot, at the bottom of the application, it says that it's currently being used by Dr. Parati Dental Office, and whoever, I don't know what, Michael and Carolyn Meridig, I don't know what that business is.
Yeah, there was a dental office that was in our building, but it's no longer there.
No, it says Joseph and Maureen Parati, that's my dentist, and I use that parking lot to park.
They just own the building next to it. We have to notify, identify all adjacent neighborhood lots who may be affected by this. So the Paratis are, they own the building, although his office isn't still there, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, no, no, I'm sorry. So you're absolutely right, Dr. Parati is the building that's in between the two buil-
Yeah, 'cause that's...
So he doesn't own the lot, he just owns, okay, 'cause I park there when I go, he's
my dentist, so I use his lot. It gets, it gets pretty, it gets pretty crowded in there during the day.
Okay, sorry. So, yeah, and if you come, if I can extend the lot, parking for you, no problem, but we own that lot, so it's not designated for the dental office. But if I see you coming, I'll give you a card.
Well, I try not to park on the lot, it's a lot of-
Whatever I can do to make it easier for you to make it to the dentist, trust me, I will. But, yeah, I just have to let them know. Again, I couldn't speak on the properties until I actually closed, so today was the closing.
So that is now your lot?
I'm what?
Owned by you. Okay, I was just-
Yes, yes, I own the lot as well.
I just wanted to make sure that, 'cause it says Parati, I just wanna make sure they didn't own it, or own any rights to it, that's all. I don't park in it, I park on the street.
Oh, so now you own the street, you can come in the lot, don't worry.
I don't want to, so thanks.
No harm, no foul, thank you.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony in this case? Please come forward. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Could you state your name and address, and spell your name, please?
Auguste DePetro, one thirty-four North Gravel Pond Road, Clarkson, PA, A U G U S D D P I E T R O.
Thank you, you can proceed.
My main problem, I'm not concerned about the building up the road, I'm concerned about the building adjacent to me. His intentions on putting apartments in the second and third floor will not work. It will not work. The building, the footprint of the building, where it sits, there's absolutely no room around the building in the front, the rear, the sides. The alley running up along the side of the building is a private driveway to the rear property. I mean, I don't understand how he could put apartments on the second and third floor. That building originally had two units in it, at the bottom, for sixty years of my life. It was a pharmacy and a liquor store. The second floor, years ago, I was told by the last owner, Mr. Walsh, was a dance-
At this point in time, I know the rules of, rules of evidence are somewhat lenient, but any hearsay testimony, we're gonna object to it if he has personal-
It's not, it's not hearsay testimony. Sixty years I was raised on that property. Right next door, you represented the people in the back. You do know that that alley is not an alley, it's a private driveway.
I'm not disputing that, I'm talking about your layer of-
What I'm telling you, that Mr. Walsh, which was a friend of ours that we purchased the building from, okay, you could-
Mr. DePetro, over here. Okay, please limit your testimony to your testimony, not Mr. Walsh.
Okay, the second floor was used years ago for a dance studio, only. The third floor was never used, it was used for storage of the tables and chairs from the second floor. Never used the second, the third floor at all. There was no heat in the building for the last thirty years. Now, I don't understand how this gentleman's going to put apartments in there, and I don't know how many apartments he's gonna put in there. The garbage is a problem, the exits out of the building are a problem, the structure of the building is a main problem. Years ago, the wall where it sided, it collapsed, and they only put siding on that building because they couldn't afford at the time to reconstruct it either with brick or stucco. Now, I don't know how far he wants to go with the building, but that's up to him. But there is no parking around that building at all. If he has parking up the road, that's fine, that's great, it doesn't bother me at all. But my main problem is the amount of people into that building and apartments in that building is a problem with myself, because that building years ago only housed three units, two commercial down and a dance studio on the second floor. That's it. So now we're gonna turn it into a four or six-story building and add more people to the building, which it never had. The building was built in nineteen oh one, there wasn't many cars around or anything, people walked. We had a restaurant directly next door for fifty-seven years. I know the building inside out better than they know the building. So, I mean, I'm just explaining to you my problems. And ninety, ninety percent of the time, all his vehicles pull in my lot, from the mobile store, constantly pull in, turn around, park, and I ask them very nicely that they have to leave. Now that he has parking, that's fine, he could sustain that. And I could live with two units on the first floor and one unit on the second floor, that's fine. Resolve the building and get it back to nice condition the way it should be, but not to put in four, six, eight units into that building. It just will not work, will not work.
Thank you.
Should I cross-examine him, question him?
Sure, you could anytime.
You're gonna need to go up to the microphone, please.
Mr. DePetro, you have no involvement with the private driveway, correct?
That is correct.
Your property ends when that private driveway begins.
That's correct.
And that private driveway does not strike that. You have no involvement with that. That's, your first complaint is it's a private driveway. Private driveway is owned by Harry Granville?
That is correct.
And I objected, Mr. Granville objected, to when you wanted to expand your property and construct what you constructed on that. That's the first time I think we might have even encountered each other all those years ago.
No, not really, they, uh...
I don't remember you before that, but let's move on. With regard to your complaint about a wall collapsing, they put siding on it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Alaharde explained that he already obtained a permit to improve the, the front facade and side of it. Could you read what that construction permit notice identifies as what work would be done on it?
Is this for the property next to B, or is it for the property that's over?
Okay.
Three nineteen North Main Avenue?
Yes.
That's Crown Properties LLC, Scranton, PA, three nineteen North Main Avenue, Scranton, PA, La Cuanan County.
Okay. What's the work to be done?
Interior storefront, renovations, furnace installation, petitions, install new perimeter guidelines, partitions act, ceilings, new windows, roofing, okay. That's another gripe that I'm gonna have, is a staging area. Where is all the equipment and sheetrock and everything? Where would, where would you have a staging area to complete this building?
First of all, that's not relevant to our request for a special exception to construct.
Why not?
Because it's not relevant. We're asking for a special exception from the zoning hearing board. That's something that can be certainly worked out with the construction workers, Mr. Alaharde. We do have the property down the street. I'm not getting into that, I'm not testifying and making any representation.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
So unfortunately, this evening, Harry Granville could not be present. I spoke with Harry yesterday. We currently staged scaffolding in the back of the building, which is on his property.
I'm gonna stop you with that testimony, because we're doing the same thing that we stopped that gentleman, okay?
Just so we could understand that there is an amazing open line of communication and dialogue between myself and Harry and his property.
All right, thank you.
And as an attorney for Mr. Alaharde, and working with Mr. Granville, I could represent to you that there's been no objections by the Granvilles, they are neighbors, and there may be possibilities down the road to opening a property on, or area on Harry's property to allow for additional parking, but that's down the road. There's a building there that has to be addressed, so they're trying to work it out financially and otherwise. But with regard to the staging, we are not here for where staging is going to be. We have two simple requests. One for three nineteen, three twenty-one North Main Avenue, a special exception, to put apartments on the second and third floor, a total of six apartments. And then another request for three oh five, three eleven North Main Avenue to put apartments on the second floor, the existing second floor of that building. We have provided to the zoning hearing board an agreement relative to off-street parking for the residential spaces in three nineteen, three twenty-one North Main Avenue. I believe that was a comment we received after our hearing in May, we need parking. My client went out and found parking.
Um, I'm sorry, how many apartments did you say in three nineteen, three twenty-one?
A total of six.
Altogether between the two buildings?
Uh, no, no.
So six plus three more, so that's nine?
Right.
And so they need what, how many?
They need fourteen.
And they have, and you have sixteen, okay.
Yep.
They have two storefronts.
We don't need off-street parking for storefronts, according to our zoning ordinance.
That's correct.
So. And I don't know if the board wants to see, he needs this back, but we could show you what the work and fail on that.
The alley next door to the building, the old Walsh building, is that not a city court?
No, no, it's a privately owned court by Mr. Granville.
Thought-
It's a private, it's a private.
I thought it used to be called something like that. It shows, on the zoning maps, it shows it as a court.
Shows up.
But it's, it's not a-
We had a vision of that, turned out it is a private driveway.
Okay, just curious.
Dan and I were, I don't wanna say part of it, but we were committed with the issues with that.
We researched that.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Excuse me a minute, in our building, we have five units, and every day, we have a total between eighteen and twenty-two cars, every single day in that building. That's permanent employees. So now, the building next door is going to have six apartments and two storefronts, okay? You gotta put the cars somewhere, and they wind up in my lot ninety percent of the time because it's convenient. But like I said, I'm glad he has parking, I'm super happy for him, and I like to see the project go through, but I don't believe I would be, could live with six units in that building and two storefronts. It just will not work. The garbage is a problem, another problem. Where are they gonna put the garbage for that six units? You have to have a large dumpster. Our dumpster is emptied every other day for five units. emptied every other day for five units. I mean, the footprint of the building is just where it sits. There is no more land with it. You know, I, I do feel bad for him because it's a nice building. I'd like to see it fixed, but I mean, not at my expense. I mean, I just cannot do, do it, because I'm the one that sits there and patrols it to stop people from taking spots from my, my, uh, storefronts, and they take the prime spots all the time. It's not his problem, I know that. It's the people that park there, but it's to educate them to not park in that lot. It's very difficult.
Uh, my client could respond to the garbage issue. Uh, circuit.
So again, in conversation...
I'm sorry. I think that's the microphone that they don't want us to use. So if you don't mind pressing that off and using his.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So again, in conversations and pretty much in agreeance with Harry, uh, we designated that in the back in Decker Court, we will create a refuse area that will be gated. It will be a lot more simple for the garbage men for his residences because he has a problem with people coming in out of the back there that try to cut, you know, around the property. And, um, we're going to pave the driveway. We're going to light it up, and it's just going to be a nice, because it needs to be very presentable as well for the, for my building. So with the exterior work that we're putting in, uh, you know, we're doing stacked stone, we're veneer in the top, we're stucco and ethist throughout the back, we're deviling brick, we're doing windows. So it's, it's, it's quite a bit of work, and again, Harry is one hundred percent up to par with assisting us in every which way he can.
Just, just one question, and then I think we touched on this the, the first time we met. Uh, one of this gentleman's concerns was the construction vehicles not parking in his, his property. And I'm just asking, is that something that you can control from day one?
A hundred percent I could, yeah. So it, it's very simple. Either you respect his property or don't work on the project. It's that simple. So I'll make it where each contractor signs an agreement as I hire them locally, because they are locals. They know these guys are coming from outside. So they have to respect his parking lot. We don't own it.
Thank you.
Respect the parking.
Six months ago, when they were doing demolition in the second floor, they dropped a dumpster in the middle of the court, and were dropping bags out the window, exploding into the dumpster. I had to get a gentleman to power wash the building because the dust was unbelievable. People were yelling and everything. I mean, there was no tube or anything going down in the dumpster. It was on a Saturday that they dropped the dumpster and they unloaded the garbage in it, and I have to live with this?
Excuse me. I'm going to object to this testimony. It is certainly not relevant to our request for special exception. We have a neighbor who is complaining about everything from that side. And it has no relevance to what is before this board, and I know the board knows your, your duties and obligations on that. My client will try to be a good neighbor. He will...
And I want to be a good neighbor also.
Yeah.
But I'm not going to, not, I'm...
That has nothing to do with what's before you, gentlemen?
To put six, to put six units in that building when it was never a six-unit structure, ever in my sixty years that I, I'm alive. Like I said, it was a drugstore, state liquor store, and the second floor used for a little dance studio. Now we're going to make it a s- a six-unit building? I mean, i- it's just ridiculous. It's on a corner that's very busy that I know she's going to say it's irrelevant, but it's not really relevant because it does happen. Things do happen there, and the more traffic that you put on that corner, the worse it's going to be. I mean, I, I, like I said, I'd love to see him fix the building and bring it up to code and fix the walls that have been falling apart for the last three, four years. Love to see him.
Well, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I, I'm looking at his side as well. No different than your property when you developed it. I mean, you developed for the, the biggest bang for your buck. I mean, and that's what...
Right, exactly.
I'm sure that's what he's looking for, is to get as much out of that building as he can.
Exactly.
So hear me out. So I mean, I'm, I'm looking at it as, is it feasible for him just to have two storefronts in, in one apartment? And the answer's probably no at that point if he's going to put that much money into it. Um, and speaking for myself and not the rest of the board, naturally I'm concerned about the, the parking. That was a big concern we heard last time, and, and it seems like he's worked that issue out.
Correct.
Um, he can try to control his tenants to make sure no one goes in your, your, your property or anything like that, and he's willing to work with the, the contractor. That's a definite to make sure. Um, but to, for us to say you can't put six units in or four units in, it, I mean, if the space is available and it meets every requirement, then there's nothing we can say to say no to that.
If he's going, going back, or he started building back to the way it was, it was never a six-unit building.
Well, there's, there's many a property throughout this city that was never a, a three and four unit, but people buy them and they convert them to three and four units. I mean, and, and that happens all the time.
I understand.
And I'm not, I'm not speaking for him or defending him, but it's an argument that, with me, doesn't, and I hate saying this, doesn't hold that much water for the fact that it does happen throughout the city.
I understand.
You took a property that had three businesses there, if I remember correctly.
Five, yes.
Prior to that, was five?
Correct.
Okay. But I mean, but you did change the landscape and everything, which benefited you. It's beautiful over there. I mean, you have a beautiful complex and everything, and, um, but I, I, I just feel that he's met what we required last time. We asked him to get the park and everything, and he, he's got the parking. He's willing to work. It sounds like he wants to be a good neighbor. He is going to invest a lot of money, because right now, if that building the way it's sitting, looks terrible.
I agree with it.
And, and it's detrimental to your property and the properties around it.
I agree. I agree with you a hundred percent.
All right, thank you.
Just, just so that everybody knows, our ordinance kind of hasn't addressed it. So it, it does say that in a CN zone, which is what this is, that does allow for conversion of a building to add additional dwelling units, and it requires a special exception. So that's why there's a special exception. So in other words, the drafters of the ordinance did consider situations like this.
Is there anyone else to give testimony? Please come up.
And why this gentleman's coming up, Jack, uh, I'm sure he's going to have to pull permits for all these apartments. They're going to be inspected to make sure they're safe and have all the stuff that he's concerned about, since it was never prior apartments.
Of course.
He seems to be concerned about the safety issue.
Yeah, he's going to have to get a seal or certificate, certificate of occupancy. So inspections will be taking place, and, um, you know, he'll have to abide by whatever the inspectors come up with.
One of the concerns we discussed a little bit up here was the second means of egress out of these units. I mean, right now, there is none, so again, that'll fall back under once the inspection's committed and everything with that.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address and spell your name.
My name's David Lynn. It's spelled D-A-V-I-D, L-Y-N-N. I live at thirty-three oh one North Main Ave, Scranton PA, one eight five zero eight.
Thank you. Proceed.
My biggest concern, like I said, he's addressed the parking. Nope, go ahead.
Your address is three three oh one North Main?
That's my home address. I'm here on behalf of DMI directly across the street. I stated in the last one.
I mean, the...
The garage.
The, across the street?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we allowed testimony last time.
Yes. Uh, I understand he's got parking situation figured out. My biggest thing is, I barely see him over there. He doesn't clean up the problems that he has coming off of his building. Just this week alone, I picked up three pieces of siding, numerous pieces of insulation blown off his building. You know, I can't count the people I have to ask to leave my parking lot because they don't want to walk a half a block or whatever over to the mobile store, which I understand it's a commercial. That doesn't matter. But I also had, from last date, our last meeting, I had stated to you guys, I had one of his workers strike two of my cars. No, no insurance on the vehicle whatsoever. You know, he's saying he can watch his, his workers. He can do this. He can do that. He hasn't done it in the past. What's going to make him do it now? That's my biggest concern. I have cars, Mercedes. I have other cars that come in. Luckily, they were low-dollar cars. You know, what happens if they hit them? Now my insurance is responsible, or I got to come out of pocket? And like I said, I never see him over there, so you can't go over and say, hey, listen, you know, this has happened. You can't contact him. And that's just one of my biggest concerns with the whole situation.
One, one second. One, one second, attorney. Uh, Jack and Dan, does this require a property manager with the number of units in, in the building?
I believe so.
So at this point, he will have a property manager, and, I mean, being a good neighbor which you claim you want to be and everything, I, I make sure you got that name and address and phone number to every individual in that area who has to be in this parking.
Yeah, if that's the case, like I said, I, I'm not going to create a big gripe. The biggest thing is, like he's saying, he's going to watch his employees are remodeling. This is one of his employees that struck two of my cars with no insurance. You know? And last time, he said, I had no idea. Well, the reason he has no idea is he's nowhere to be found.
Was, was it his cars that had no insurance or...
It was one of his workers he employed to do work on the building, had parked in my upper part of the lot, which is on a hill. There was ice.
Is that the one on the corner of Lackawanna and Main?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And he slid into two Subaru's that I had on the lot. One knocked out a marker light. The other one caved in the whole driver's fender.
Once again, this is not relevant to our...
I was going to say, that sounds like an issue for the police now.
It, it was brought up to the police, but he, it is relevant because he's saying he's remodeling. He's saying he's going to have his employees sign a contract. He hasn't done any of this in the past.
Well, we can't, we can't, we, we can't go backwards here. We're looking at the future and...
And I think the board knows. You can't put the cart before the horse.
Right.
He's got a permit to, uh, improve the outside. There was a complaint about the condition of the outside. He's allowed to improve the outside. He's asked for a building permit. Uh, he, if this project gets on board, he will be able to do other improvements, as we all know. You need money to pay for workers. Uh, any, any complaints about, uh, uninsured cars running to, into other cars, it's not truly relevant to his application as long as he's provided you, and we've certainly made, uh, the best efforts in a good faith attempt to comply with the zoning requirements for parking. Uh, Sergio, once the, I don't want to say once the building, but when the building gets online, starts with construction, I'm sure he will be, uh, a more active presence, uh, to make sure they're doing it right, to make sure they're not disturbing neighbors. Uh, it is what it is. We have a building that is totally useless. It's vacant. I don't know what Mr. De Pedro identified the number of years, but I'm sure many of the boards are, board members are familiar. It's just sat there. The Scartellis owned it. They couldn't do anything with it. My client is new blood. He is excited about being in the city of Scranton. He wants to improve the buildings, uh, and do what is right. That's why we are here. That's why he bought the, the building down the street.
While, while you can't go back in time, you can go forward, and now that he has the off-street parking up the street, maybe he can make it a condition that all his contractors park in that lot also, just to, to...
I just have a question about the storefronts. Are those, are those owned, I mean, you own the building, so obviously you'll own the stores. Are, are those going to just be leased out by whoever, whatever stores are there, or are you going to put your own storefronts in there? Because right now, they're occupied, right?
Yes, so currently in the three nineteen, three twenty-one, uh, property, there is a cell phone store. He's been there since I purchased.
Right.
And I've, you know...
So he just leases, so he just pays you rent? So, okay, so they're not...
Correct, monthly.
So you don't have anything to do with those? You just own the building?
No, no, I don't have, I don't have any interest in building any businesses of my own in those buildings. No.
So it's just what's there is going to stay there and...
Correct. Like, uh, the new property, three oh five, three eleven, that has, uh, the Garibaldi, the Mexican cuisine restaurant, she's going to stay active as a tenant. Um, I had a conversation earlier with Jim Nassar Senior, uh, which we might have a tenant for, you know, for the new prop, property as well, so...
But, yeah, but they don't need the parking off-street, so that's not really a concern. I just wanted to know if, if, if those were going to stay there, that's all.
No problem.
Just, just one question. Please stay there.
I'm sorry.
The square footage of your apartments in, uh, the, in-building?
The, the, the two stories that are going to be converted?
What's the square footage of each apartment going to be?
Um, they're all, uh, they range between eight hundred and twenty-five to nine hundred and change, something like that. They're two-bedroom, uh, apartments. Yeah. And on each floor, one of them will be a one-bedroom, the rear unit, correct.
And they still, what square footage are they going to be, the one-bedroom?
No, I'm sorry?
The square footage of the one-bedroom unit?
It's, it's roughly about eight hundred. That's the lesser square footage. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
They're, they're roughly all in the same range.
Okay, thank you.
The, the way the layout formed, it only allowed for one-bedroom.
And as I indicated, uh, in the previous application, uh, the architect's plans were submitted together with that. Uh, they're rather cumbersome, expensive to reproduce. There is absolutely no changes. Uh, it, it remains the same. Now we just have the parking.
Two things. With this lawyer, she just stated it is what it is. I, I really just don't feel like they're into what they're saying, first off. The other thing is, well, like Mr. De Pedro said, they got a mess coming off the building now. He had a problem in the past when they were there with whatever it was. I wasn't there at the time. They're not cleaning up now, so when they start remodeling, and stuff's blowing across the street, who's going to pick that up? Me still? That, that, that's the biggest concern, that I'm already cleaning up this mess he has now.
I would suggest you call our office, and we'll send a building inspector over, and if there's litter and garbage, then he would...
Well, I can make it a point to do that.
Sure, and there's a process to, to police that.
Okay, not a problem. Like I said, I can make it a point to do that. I just hate calling five times a day.
And if there is, there is a problem, we give them citations, and it starts to become a financial issue for him.
Okay.
It's cheaper to pick up the garbage than it is to pay fines.
Well, I, I agree, and like I said, I usually just pick it up and that's it, because there's nobody around. I would have went over and I would have been a nice neighbor. I wouldn't be down here. I would have said something, though. But again, there's nobody ever there.
I currently have an active permit. I hired a contractor.
Okay.
You have your card to give him, so...
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I can give you my card.
I can give you my card as well.
Okay. So that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Nope. Um, yeah, we're going to make the motion. What were the contingencies that you suggested we place on there?
Um, I only mentioned that during construction, that the construction vehicles...
Stay in the parking lot?
Stay in the parking lot at, uh, three oh five, three eleven.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion with the contingency that the construction vehicles stay at the lot, inside the lot.
Wait a second.
And, and one more. Uh, I'm not sure if he testified this or not, but the trash area is going to be down in the parking lot, and it's going to be enclosed?
Correct.
Okay. Just that contingency as well, that we can enclose that trash.
So that contingency on top of the parking, uh, vehicles, yeah.
I'll make that a motion.
I'll second that, too.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes, by a vote of five to zero, your request has been approved for both properties. Dan, one, one quick thing before we go. Do we vote on both properties? Did we do that right?
I, I think you would have to.
Yeah, I, I think we should vote on both.
Yeah, let's, let's do it again. So that's going to be case number three?
That was case number three.
So four is three...
Four is for the three apartments at that place, at that, at this...
That's the second story. That's the one with the two stories, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Well, I'll make, I'll make the motion with the same contingency that the vehicles that are going to be used for that, as well as the garbage. Same contingencies apply to that.
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes, by a, by a vote of five to zero, it's been approved again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next on that parade here?
We're going to take a five-minute break.
All yours, Jack.
The next adjutant's item is Lynda Kaufman, seven fifteen River Street. The next agenda item is Lynda Kaufman, 715 River Street.
Good evening. Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
Yes.
Please state your name and address, and spell your name, please.
Lynda Kaufman, K-A-U-F-M-A-N, 641 North Main Avenue, Scranton.
You can proceed.
Um, so I bought this building at 715 River. It was a three-unit apartment building, consisting of two one-bedroom and one two-bedroom. It also has a four-car garage. So it was in foreclosure, so now I would like to get a C of O for the three-unit. And I have parking, one additional parking on the side, that I can use for a fifth parking Everything is intact, there's three kitchens, there's bathrooms, it's all updated, and it's a very clean building, and there's really no issues with the building.
Well, was it condemned? Is that why it went back to a single?
Yes.
Okay.
It was condemned and vacant for more than six months.
Okay, so has it gone back to a single?
Correct.
Your garage in the back, are them spaces, them bays rented out right now? Is there people parking in them?
No.
So there's nobody in the bays at all? Any of the bays in the back?
There's, um, no, no one's using the garage. I'm waiting for it for the tenants.
Okay, I just want to make sure, that's my question. Jack, that parking spot on the side, is that actually legal at that corner of that alley? Because she's going into the yard in the front.
Well, it fits the dimensions. That would be for the board to decide, but I think-
Technically, it could be labeled a driveway.
Okay, I just talked, the closeness of that alley right where it butts the street right there.
That's right at the corner of the alley, right next to the garage, that's like directly abutting the alley, right where that pole is? Because I'm looking at the garage right now, I don't see any spots in the front of the house.
Still alongside the front of the house, on River Street.
No, there's not a pole, there's not a-
No, I'm gonna go back to the front of the house. He said it was in the front.
If you're looking at the house, it's to the left right alongside the alley.
Yes.
Or court.
Oh, you mean inside the yard there?
Yes. There's a patio that could act as a driveway, and then in front of that, there's a parking spot, grass, that could act as a driveway.
How would you access that spot?
I would remove the bushes that are the circles, and come in, the Gallagher Court, come in that way.
I believe she has the four parking spots and the one on the side of the house, I don't think we had to go ripping anything out, I don't think we needed all that.
Well, just the access would have to come off Gallagher Court, though. There'll be a couple of bushes, I think, that you'd have to remove.
Yeah, there's a tall one and a couple of short ones there.
Correct.
You said there are three kitchens there?
Yes.
And bathrooms in each unit? Are the utilities split up already?
Yes.
And you wrote approximate cost $800, is that because it's just basically move-in ready?
For the parking?
Is, was that the $800 was for the, for the parking lot?
Yes.
To remove the bushes?
Yes.
So, so basically, someone could just walk right off the, just move in tomorrow, and then the house would be all ready, no renovations are needed?
Oh, no, I'm waiting for a, an electrical permit.
Yeah, but that, yeah, but that's on-
The $800 is how much it would cost to make a parking spot, to remove the bushes.
So that's, that's what I was asking, so that's all you need to do?
Yes.
To fix that, to get the house?
No, that's just about it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so, because you just wrote approximate cost $800, I didn't know-
It's just for the parking spot.
That's just for the parking spot.
Yeah, well, then she said that, I didn't know if, I didn't know if renovations were needed on the inside as well.
Uh, the renovations are probably gonna be about 1,500, and that's for the electrical-
Just the electrical work?
Yes, nothing else has to be done. And the inspector was already out, the initial inspector, so I have the checklist.
Are they heating?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm just, once, if I get my C of O, then I can get my electrical permit.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wants to give testimony in this case? Good evening. Do you soundly swear, raise your right hand, please, soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Please state your name and address, and spell your name, please.
Kathleen Madzin, M-A-D-Z-I-N. I am the vice president of the South Side Neighborhood Association. Um, I received a call from one of the neighbors on that block, and she just wanted to remind me that the parking there is extremely tight in that block, on the street. And she also thought that the actual garage in the back of that property is a rented facility and not a vacant facility. So I don't know if that's true or not true, but that's what I'm reporting on behalf of one of our neighbors. So the only concern the neighbors seem to have in that area, and I'm the only one, obviously, is just that the parking on the street, make sure that there is enough off-street for it.
Thank you.
I could address somewhat to the garage, I was there twice, once with the inspectors and once to meet Ms. Kaufman out there, and I didn't see any cars in the garage at all. Looked to me to be vacant.
Well, we'll take her at her testimony at this point here.
So, uh, she presented us with parking for five, so we're gonna vote on it, the five parking spots, is that how?
Yep.
Okay, I make a motion with the five parking spots.
I'll second, second.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
Yes.
Chairman Gattens?
Yes, by a vote of five to zero, you've been approved. Good luck with your project.
Agenda item number six, 138-140, South Fillmore Avenue.
Good evening, please raise your right hand. Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Please state your name and your address, and spell your name.
Sure. Zachary Pashke, it's P-A-S-C-H-K-E, and my address is 1509 Farr Street, Scranton.
You can proceed.
Um, I'm here today requesting a special exemption for a property that I brought, that I purchased. It's 138 and 140, South Fillmore Avenue, and I'm requesting an exception to be able to rent the units short-term.
Both units or just one unit?
Um, I'd like to have, the 140 is currently long-term rented, but I'd like the ability to rent both of those tenants.
When you say short-term, what do you mean by short-term?
Meaning, um, that people could, that people could rent the property for less than a month. Meaning, they could stay there all night if they want.
Like, is this gonna be like a hotel, or like a bed and breakfast, or like an Airbnb?
Like an Airbnb property. We wouldn't offer any actual services at the property. It just would be a furnished apartment that's available short-term.
And I noticed that there was only one driveway and one garage in the back, and who uses that, and where would these tenants park?
So 140 is currently short-term, or is currently long-term rented. That does have a small, I had it listed as a driveway, but it's essentially like a parking space.
Yeah, I drove through there yesterday, I had a very, very hard time turning around. I just pulled over to the spot, and when I backed up, I had a, took me at least three tries before I was able to get back out facing forward, because I, because I was too narrow to go out backwards.
Sure.
So, that's for your long-term, where are your short-term tenants gonna park?
Um, there's a driveway on the side of 138.
Well, that's the one-
It's about 10 feet wide.
That's the one I was, that's the one I went, I didn't see in any other entrance. There was a fence there, so.
Yeah, there's no other entrance to that.
So there's just the one driveway with the one garage for both sides of the house?
There's one off-street parking space on the other side of the house.
So, Jack, how many parking spots for this type of condition? So, I, so we're putting the whole house in the play by what he's requesting tonight, as far as parking. Am I correct? Because he's looking, once this tenant moves out, to go short-term on both sides.
Right, right. Well, I would say that the same, same rules apply, three spots.
Per unit? Or just, okay?
Yeah, one map.
Even though, even though it's gonna be basically Airbnb or-
Right. Unless Dan has a suggestion, I couldn't find anything in the ordinance that would regulate-
Which, the problem is, well, Bed and Breakfast use, says one, one off-street parking spaces for every two dwelling units. In other words, if he has two, rents two short-term, he needs one park, one off-street parking space.
Are you gonna be renting the unit as per rooms?
No.
No.
No, two.
I mean, we've had one before, that was come before, it's that they were gonna do individual rooms, so I mean, that changes the-
Right, that's a legitimate question, yeah.
That makes it a business. Um, what, so 148 is rented, or 138, not that it really matters, but the side of the house with the parking spot, that's the one you wanna rent out, short-term?
The, the one that, yeah, the one that, the one that's currently vacant that I'd like to-
And that's just a one, that's just a one, that's a one apartment?
Yeah, that's one apartment.
Okay, how many bedrooms, how many bedrooms, and what's the square footage of that apartment?
Uh, it's three bedrooms, it's approximately 900.
Upstairs, downstairs?
Yeah, they're, they're almost identical.
So they're like a double?
Yeah, it's a double, side by side.
Well, what is your reasoning for wanting to go short, short-term instead of long-term tenants?
Um, I wanted to try it and just see what the, what the opportunity for profitability with that versus a long-term rental is.
I, I, I'm not comfortable with these, because our book doesn't cover these at all. We ran this very hard one time before.
They were R1A.
They were R1A, what, this R2? I just feel if we open this door-
The Bed and Breakfast has a maximum 14-day rental. So I don't know if that's what you're fitting under by short-term. Are you gonna be more than 14 days, then you're technically not a Bed and Breakfast.
Right, and, and what I'm looking to do is to rent the property for less than 14 days on the ones, the one side is currently a long-term rental.
Right, but you're asking-
If I had to, if I had the exemption, would that prevent me from renting long-term, to rent more than a month?
No, you can, you can always rent, it's a half a double, you can rent it-
Right, right, right.
Long-term, at any time. It's the short-term which turns it into a-
Right.
A Bed and Breakfast, really. And that has a maximum of 14 days to any particular renter.
Are you planning on stipulating that it be no more than 14 days, or if somebody wants it for a month?
Well, is there anything preventing me from being able to rent it out for longer than a month? That would essentially be a long-term rental, wouldn't it?
We, we can't entertain the best of both worlds with it. I mean, I understand, if that's the case, then he loses, when he, if this was approved, he'd lose it at that point, or should lose it at that point.
Well, you're, you're, the ordinance has very shaky definitions, let's just say. Up to 14 days of Bed and Breakfast, between, up to 30 days is a, comes under the heading of motel, and then over 30 days comes under the heading of rooming house. So, you know, there's different rules that apply to different, what you're calling short-term rentals.
Stepping that it doesn't go over 14 days, it's not a problem.
Well, that would be important.
Yeah, because that brings it in one set of rules.
Because in an, in an R2 area, it is allowed for, under a special exemption.
A Bed and Breakfast?
Yeah.
It is, right?
Yes, it is. And the problem we had before was that was R1A.
R1.
It is allowed in an R2, you said?
As a special exemption.
Yes, yes.
Under a special-
It doesn't need a variance, it needs a special exemption.
Correct, yes, yes.
My only concern is, is the flip-flopping, that sounds like it's probably gonna happen.
I'm sorry?
I said, my only concern is, is the flip-flopping, and from the testimony, it sounds like it's a probability that's gonna happen, it's gonna go from short-term to long-term, to short-term to long-term.
I, yeah, I agree. Because if it doesn't work out short-term, he's gonna wanna switch to long-term, and then, we didn't give him the special exemption for long-term, we gave him the special exemption for under 14 days, so then he would be in violation, wouldn't he? If we voted for under 14 days, it would change the whole-
Under 14 days is Bed and Breakfast, no question.
Right, so, yeah, so if we vote on that, and then he decides to change his mind, that's another, then he'd have to come back here, wouldn't he, to, for another special exception for whatever the next amount of days, like 15 to 30 with the hotel, is that what you said?
It wouldn't be rented, if I can't, it wouldn't be rented for 15 to 30 days.
It would or wouldn't?
It would not.
Yeah.
Was this the intent when purchasing it, to pretty much go like Airbnb style, at least?
It wasn't necessarily, it was originally-
Long-term rented, long-term rented the first unit, and just decided I'd like to try to short-term rent the second unit to see what would happen.
It's got separate utilities, it's got separate everything. You've got a side-by-side double.
No, he can use single family here and single family there.
Right. Or, there's another double.
But he can't put, he can't have two units on one side without, in other words, he can't have-
Each unit would be a single.
Each unit is a single.
Right, so to answer your question, Carrie, in an R2, it is side-by-side, double.
So each, each side is in separate individual unit.
So he doesn't need zoning approval for that.
Or which part, Jack?
If he, if he decides that the 14 days isn't working, and wants to just rent it long-term.
Right.
He wouldn't have to come back to us?
No, he wouldn't have to come back, because it's allowed in an R2.
Right.
And so if he's granted a variance, he can flip-flop back and forth, then?
He can.
Just say the first couple of months he went short-term, didn't work, went long-term, wants to go back short-term again.
Yes, he could flip-flop.
Yes, right. But he wouldn't have to come back to the board for the-
Okay, well, that's what I was wondering, if he-
Yeah, right. Because of the R2-
It's a special exemption for both, because it's in an R2?
Because it's a side-by-side, if we're up and down, it would be different.
Okay.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony in this case?
Yeah, are we, do we need two spots or three, based on the classification?
They just one, right?
I'm sorry?
Just, just one for each side.
One for each, so two spots, which they have?
I think he said he-
Well, he has the one side with the garage and the, and the dual spot, and then the other side next to the house, there's just a spot.
Is that what you guys observed, there's a garage on one side and then-
He has, he has two spots.
Okay, so he's good, then.
So with the Bed and Breakfast, if we're gonna call it that, or short-term, he just needs one per unit?
He just needs one per unit, yeah.
But if we were talking a regular two-unit, we would need a three.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to hear.
That's, yes, that's-
That's not what we're doing.
Well-
It makes no, it doesn't make sense, but-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that raises the other question, if he goes long-term, he's gonna need an extra spot, and we voted-
That's true.
We voted yes, based on the one spot, and then now he's gonna be spotted.
Wait a second.
Wait a minute, maybe I'm wrong.
Because we, we have to treat a half a double as a single unit. So if he's just renting a single unit, it's real, technically, he's renting a single family dwelling, which doesn't need any extra spots.
Right, so he needs, so he needs two either way.
I, I thought it was one and a half per unit.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
One and a half per unit in a, in an apartment.
If we're up and down.
Okay, okay, that's right, not up and down, I get it.
But if you're renting your single-family house, you don't need it.
So the fact that it's side-by-side, it changes everything?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Mr. Walsh?
Unfortunately, till there's some more regulations on this type of stuff, I'm gonna vote no.[1754.49]
Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
No.
Chairman Gattens?
No, by a vote of four to one, your request has been denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Sharon Flowers, 519 South Irving Avenue.
Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
Yes.
Please state your name and address and spell your name, please.
Sharon Flowers, F-L-O-W-E-R-S. 58 East 117th Street, New York, New York. I requested the property I'm, for the zoning, is on 519 South Ria, Irving Avenue.
Thank you.
Did you already purchase this property before, before you start? This property's already been purchased, or is this contingent?
It's already been purchased.
Huh?
I already purchased it.
You already purchased it for... You're gonna get a chance to testify against if you have a concern, after she's finished with her. Go ahead.
Yes, my request to return the property back to its original, it was two-unit, it was a one-bedroom on the downstairs and a two-bedroom upstairs. It has two, two guest meter, it have two kitchen, two bathroom. I would be living in one, one unit and rent the other one out.
How long have you owned the property?
Three years.
And it's been, can I ask you why you haven't proceeded with this prior to us?
Well, I, I had a health issue at the time, and I also had moved from Illinois when I purchased the property, and I moved to New York City. And, and there was a letter that sent to me concerning the property, and I didn't receive it, cause they sent it to Illinois, they didn't send it to New York, I didn't know I had to update my address, where I was residing. But I came to the court and take care of all the matters, returned into the house, I took care of everything that needed to be taken care of.
And it has been removed from the demolition list this past...
They gave me the okay to zoning, and from the zoning, they'll let me purchase the permit to start working on the property.
Right, but I'm saying it has been removed, and it was on the demolition list.
Right.
And it's removed from that demolition list.
Why was it on the demolition list?
Because I couldn't come to Pennsylvania to take care of it at the time it was there, yes.
How many times was it condemned?
I don't know, I just know the one time when I, I found out at the signing date that it was condemned, I did not know, cause the realtor didn't tell me. I just, and I, when I found out it was condemned, I started to do my own research, finding out how to go about it, cause I have no clue, I don't live in this state. And I, and I just going by what I could find, or question I could ask, and whatever they give me, and that's what I go from.
The garage downstairs, do you plan on rehabilitating the garage that's there and use it for parking?
I do have a garage, I use it parking, and I have a piece that, 26 by 11.
Now, my question is, are you gonna repair that garage?
Yes.
And where are the other two spots going to be?
There's, there's a spot in 11, 20, it's size 11, 11 feet by 26 and a half feet in the back. Right next to the garage, behind the house.
Yeah, there's a, there's a fence there that you left out in your drawing, that's right next to that, behind that fence. Yeah, but where's the other spot gonna be? That's just, you need three.
One, she, I think she's saying one in the garage and two in that parking area.
Oh, there's, there's, I couldn't even fit my one car in that spot, I don't know if she's gonna fit two.
That front spot won't fit two cars.
No.
There's no...
I was told that this spot only supposed to be a nine-feet by 16.
Nine by 18, yeah.
By 18.
Yeah, we were all looking at the same thing, that garage is in disrepair, we'd...
Severe.
Before we get too far into it, but did you ever consider taking that down and making it all parking, or do you really, are you attached to the garage being a structure?
I'll, I'll get the proper permit to see what's the structure to it. It seems fine to me, when I go in there, there's no, like, it's just simple cracks on the outside, it's nothing from the inside, and the floor, the floor is solid.
Are you thinking she can get more parking if the garage is down?
That was my thought, be in there. Anyone else?
I don't know. It's, you say 11 by 26 and a half feet?
Right, in the back, behind the house.
And each spot is supposed to be nine by what, 18 feet?
And, and looking at that garage, and I'm not an engineer by any means, but it looks like the right-hand corner of your house sits, is actually part of that garage, so the garage does offer support for that.
That's the reason why I have to get someone to sit and inspect it, to make sure that it's sound, cause it is holding the house in one part.
That's what I mean, I think removing...
To move in it is not...
Isn't gonna be feasible at that point.
I mean, when I was out there, it looks like there's possibly two spots we have to give her.
One in the garage, one in the front.
And then she would be sure one parking spot.
I also noticed that it's four and a half feet between fence line and alley. Is that enough space to back out onto the alley to exit the property?
Yes, absolutely.
Jack?
I, I don't understand what that four and a half feet is, Jack.
It's just the space between, like, the garage ending, there's like four and a half feet out before you reach the...
But so, so that's in that total, that's in that total of 11 feet, then?
No, that's not.
So you're saying that from the house?
Yeah, that's from, that's from...
Is 15 and a half feet to the alley? I, that's not what I measured.
No, and also pulling into your spots, I don't know how you plan on having them work, if you had them like side-by-side, or turning into the... I, I just, I just had a very hard time backing out when I was back there. Cause the alley, there's a, there's another alley behind with, with other people's parking spots there. And there were cars there when I was there. I don't know, I don't, I don't see how the parking's gonna work.
The, I mean, I'm a little confused by your drawing.
Yeah, I am too.
It says four and a half feet between fence line and alley.
Jack and I are a little confused with your drawing. You have front house and rear house.
Right.
What's in the front house?
I don't own it.
Separate owner.
Oh, you don't own that house?
Separate owner.
Okay, that's, that's what had us confused, okay. So you're only, you're only in the rear house, gotcha.
That's right, I was hoping you were gonna say. So, so she needs three spots. There's the one-car garage, and we're saying, we're saying that we can't fit any more than one car in that spot.
Well, from the stoop to the edge of the alley where it's paved and sealed, which is the very edge of the alley, is 10 feet from the stoop.
Yeah.
I mean, it's tight there, we can't have her stick on the alley.
Nope.
Let's see if there's anyone else to give testimony. Does anyone else give testimony in this case?
Not only that, but how would they make it swing out of the garage, like, in either direction, but how would it be so terrible?
Everyone there swings out of the...
Yeah, there, there's room to swing out the garage, I'll give you that much, I mean, this garage isn't that alley.
I couldn't tell there's...
Yeah. Please come up.
Go ahead.
If you could step aside, while someone else give testimony, please. Thank you. Do you soundly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God?
I do.
Please state your name and address and spell your name.
Jane Patterson, P-A-T-T-I-S-O-N. I live at 527 South Irving Avenue, in Scranton, Pennsylvania.
Thank you, you can proceed.
That house has been a disaster since they were trying to remodel it. They tried to remodel it without permits. They almost killed her uncle and my husband, cause they were running a generator in the basement fixed to the electrical panel. And after that happened, no one has come back after that. So they're doing repairs inside without any contracts. No nothing. And myself and my neighbors here, we are the ones that have to live with that, and all the creatures that have come in and out of that house since nobody's been taking care of it. When she appeared this year, the bushes were up to the roof of the porch. So, it wasn't one unique family, it was Mrs. Moran's, cause I've been in that house 53 years.
What would be the use of the second gas meter?
That, the last people that had, was actually owned by Mr. Moran's, who's there, Mrs. Moran's son. And there was two dwellings. And then, after that hassle, disaster of those people, it was vacant.
And just so you know, now that it's condemned, it's gonna go through a rigorous rehab to be able to ever be occupied again. So, I mean, there's gonna be...
Permits will be required.
I mean, it's gonna go through some major inspections to, to ever be anybody to live in that house ever again. So they would have to invest a ton of money.
No, no, get me wrong, when Mrs. Moran was alive, that was immaculate house, very old hardwood, everything. And the tenants that were there after Mrs. Moran, they ruined everything, between pets and everything. I mean, they had to come to take the dogs away from them, cause their whole house was...
I have, we can't hold these people accountable for the past.
No, I can't, but I can't account them for when they had this generator in the basement of the home. Couldn't find her house, her uncle, her uncle who was barely breathing in front of the house, and my husband, who's a fireman, ran in to save him with no air pack, no nothing. And when the fire department didn't get there, they couldn't even get a CO2 reading, it was off the charts. The firemen literally had to go in and carry them out.
I completely understand.
So I'm not gonna stand for any of this more crap than the neighborhood.
But I don't think you wanna sit in there empty and fall down, either.
No, well, at that point, some of the neighbors, before it was even, when it was on the for-sale list, the neighbors in the back are gonna buy it and make a big parking lot out of it. But, to go back to whatever it's gonna be, we've already dealt with people that have been there, two apartments. How many times the police were called? I mean, we have an apartment also on the other side of us, the police were called. So, that's up to you guys, I mean, it's, it's a disaster for us.
I mean, I believe, Jack, she can have it as a one-unit without our approval, correct? So she can still open the house back up without us, but she's looking for the second unit, right? Is that correct?
Anyone else wanna give testimony?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I'm not disputing that incident happened with my uncle there. He, he, he is a contractor, but he's in New York. And because I did not know the concept of how Scranton license and regulation, I, I had to be looking for my own research to find out, or nobody tell you nothing. If you come from somewhere, somebody have to tell you something for you to know. I did not know, he is a licensed contractor in New York City, but I did not know the process that I had to go about to get all this stuff to prepare, to do the repair. And he's a licensed contractor, and the, the person that he had get to help him is the one who connect the, the electrical and the, that was the problem. And I'm the one that called, went and get the help to get my uncle out of there. Yes.
Do you...
But, and, and the problem, I, I agree to whatever happened, whatever fine I get, I took care of it. And I'm willing to take care of whatever necessary to bring the building back.
So I mean, you do know the laws now, you know, understand the permits required.
I still don't know all of it, because I have a neighbor that, he have pool, and he keeps emptying the water on my property when, when he needs to empty the pool.
Well, I mean, that's something you have to take care of.
So, I still have to find out where to go to settle that problem legally, cause I don't know, I don't live in this state, I'm learning as I'm going.
But I'm saying, going forward, the responsibility falls on you to learn it, not us to teach you. I mean, I'm sure there's people in the city, in the license department, more than half to answer your questions going forward, so you are in compliance with everything, everything is being done to code throughout that building.
I'm going, I'm going to the license office, and I'm, everything I asked them to, I know where I'm on, and what, what's the right thing to do.
And you are gonna live in that building?
Yes, I am gonna live there.
Can I ask you one question before you? You, you plan on living in this building, like, like he said, is it possible, Jack or Dan, if we were to vote on opening up one of the units and her maybe prove to the neighbors that, and she can come back to us in the future for the second unit, once she was able to get the first unit up and running?
No, yeah, you either have to approve the two units or deny the two units. If you deny the two units, she has the right to live there anyway.
Yeah, she doesn't need approval.
She doesn't need approval for her to live there.
But if she was just to get the one unit uncondemned, would she have to get the, the whole building uncondemned, or?
I believe she has to get the whole building uncondemned.
So both units?
They'll address whatever it's condemned for. I, I know the plumbing's gonna pull out the building and, you know, to the degree and stuff like that, so, and evidently there's electric problem too, so.
That would be something that she would have to decide, because I don't know what the, the cost benefit ratio would be for her without the rental.
We'll let Ms. Madison give testimony. You're still sworn in from the last time?
As the representative for the Neighborhood Association, again, we look for the most responsible landlords and property owners we can find. And I pulled the deed on this, and it says that you purchased the property on 10/29/15. So that's a long time ago, and if the neighbors are saying no one was there, again, I always come up and say, your past behavior is predictive of your future behavior. And I also looked, I looked for actual tax deed, or tax bills, and I couldn't find them listed, but I do see back taxes of garbage fees that haven't been paid. For 17 and 16, for a thousand and $2, basically. Now, we don't want dilapidated buildings over in Southside, we also don't want backyard parking. So, if that building could be rehabbed for a single-family, that may be acceptable to neighbors, because there, you said, there's room for one car. The alley parking is horrendous over there, we already have a lot of problems with garbage being dumped in the alley, irresponsible back alley residents. So, the tenants also need to make sure that they're gonna be taken care of and be nice to the neighbors as well. And the other thing we worry about is, are you really gonna live there? I mean, you haven't checked on this property. Right, and when I did a little bit of searching, I see that the New York property, their New York address that's listed on the deed here, is that property for sale as well? Do you live in that property?
I live in apartment in New York City.
Right, at the 58 East 117th Street?
Yes.
And then, do you also live in Illinois, too?
No, I don't. I moved from there two years ago.
Okay, so you lived in New York three years ago when you bought the building, then you went for one year?
I lived in Illinois when I bought the building, and I moved from New York two years ago.
And are you carrying on your property taxes on that building?
On which building?
On the 58th, we can't do that.
Ms. Madison, I'm gonna stop you there, because that doesn't come before us, but before she can pull any permits, if this was approved, she'd have to be up to date on all that.
Okay, thank you for that.
They'll check that in the office.
I don't know one cent on my taxes, and I don't know where the garbage come, because I don't have no garbage.
Nothing.
Well, that's exactly right.
That's exactly right, she's gonna make it's permit, there shouldn't be any garbage on it.
There shouldn't be.
So basically, what we're here just to discuss is if she needs three spots or one spot, or has three spots or just the one spot?
Yeah, because if we deny, if we deny two apartments, she can, she can still live there as a single family, yeah, and we can't stop that.
Okay.
And is there any rules that, if the property is condemned, how long it would need to take to be rehabbed, like, how long she has to do that?
Or do we look at it for another three years in the ramshackle state that it's in?
Well, she, if...
Well, it's on the demo list, so eventually, if it's not...
I thought it was off that now.
Well, I'm not sure if...
I, I checked with one of the members of the Housing Appeals Board, they pulled it off the last, their last meeting.
Okay, well, so, so now there is a timeframe, if she doesn't start work, I think it's...
If I'm not mistaken, did they give you six months to get this?
They gave me six months.
Six months, which falls in line with us.
Right, right, so she does have to show work, and then she would get additional time if needed to finish the project. But that would come from the Housing Appeals Board, not us.
Okay. All that we ask is that you be responsible and avoid as much property or parking problems as we can.
I am responsible, one thing I wanna say, if you sick, all of a sudden, if you get sick, all of a sudden, it's not your fault. If you're already working, and all of a sudden you get sick, because of the job you do.
Right.
You know?
We understand that.
There's nothing I could do about that.
No.
Are you doing this all by yourself? Do you have no help? Are you doing this all by yourself? Do you have no help?
No, not really.
So, so if you had help, then you're being sick would probably not have...
Right, well, well, I'm a lot better because I had to get two surgery. I'm a lot better now. I'm stronger and I also, well, I have to hire professional people to get the work done, so.
Just said, what do you think you'll have to invest in this property to get it up to?
I don't know because of, I have to have someone to come and tell me what's there. But I, whatever it takes to get it running because I need to live there.
You don't have any idea at all?
You don't have, you don't have any contractors that you've looked into? Because that is a long and lengthy process in and of itself. And if you're only given six months, it could take that long to find a contractor.
I'm willing to do whatever it takes if I have to come back for extra time because they gave me six months since October and I'm here still with the zoning. So that's all, by the time I get an answer, that'll be till December. So three months will be gone. So I still got to come back to ask for additional time.
She wouldn't have to come back here. Wouldn't you just have to get approval from the zoning off, from the zoning office? Yeah, you wouldn't have to come back to us. You would just have to go to him.
I think she means to the, for the demolition.
Yeah. To extend the demolition. So, so if you're not, if you're not within code, within six months, they could still demolish.
Well...
Is that, is that how it works?
No, she just has to show, just has to show substantial work being done.
Right, she has to show that she's pulled permits and moving forward.
Okay.
And if she needs more time.
Doesn't have to be completed. It just has to...
So she can get an extension.
Exactly.
I mean, just from prior experience, I mean, a two-unit building condemned, I mean, you could be looking 50, $60,000 or... Are you prepared for that?
And just, okay, I'm sorry, one more question. You live, you currently live in New York City?
Yes.
And if the house is condemned, it's going to need a lot, you're going to be living in New York City while this is all being done?
No, I have to come.
Because you can't live, you can't live in the apartment.
I have to come and live here.
But you can't live in this house until...
I'm in the process of looking for apartment here until the work is finished.
Windows.
Windows.
Thanks. The property itself, all of the windows need to be replaced. The third floor windows have been left open ever since whoever left. So the birds are having a nice living forest up there. Under the front porch, we have scunts. We have groundhogs.
We're hoping, we're hoping to fix that problem.
That's part of the process.
That's the whole process.
But they're still there and they're underneath my porch.
Nowhere it's been done yet.
So we have traps out there. The gentleman in back alley has traps.
Well, hopefully that'll be corrected once the project, the project goes forward, if it goes forward.
Next, new porches, new doors, new everything.
Don't look at me.
Everything that inside needs to be done.
Ms. Patterson, stay there for one second. I'm going to ask you a question that sometimes we ask different people when they're opposing something. If this was turned down, what would you rather say? I know you said a parking lot the neighbors wanted to buy it before, but if it's not on the market, that house is going to sit there. And anyone that comes here thinking the city is going to jump on terror in a building now, they don't live in the city. I mean, that, that building could sit there for 10, 15 years before it hits the demolition list. Just because it's on the list doesn't mean it's going to be torn down. So what, what's the, the middle of the road here with this?
It needs to be properly taken care of, properly permitted when she's doing it. If her uncle's coming back to do it, he has to become on the...
All permits have to be pulled by licensed contractor.
By licensed contractor.
By licensed contractor.
That's correct.
Correct.
That's correct. And if they're not, they could apply to be a licensed contractor or they can apply for a one-time license. But they would have to fill the require, fulfill the requirement for that if they're not licensed.
So if this individual or any other individual that should happen own that house, if they met everything there, would that satisfy? I know it's not going to 100% satisfy the neighbors, but would that satisfy that this project is going to go on and it could be a betterment to the neighborhood?
Sure, needs a lot of work.
I mean, well, that burden falls on, on the applicant here as far as the work and everything.
Lots of work. And we would like it kept neat and clean the way it is now. Not with the hedges going over the roof of the house.
Well, I'll make an assumption that if the applicant's going to live there, I think the care will be a little bit better since they're living there than, than an absentee landlord would be.
If they're going to live there and spend that kind of money to rehab it.
But the original time when she bought the house, she lived in Connecticut. And she told us her husband and her bought the home to move here so it was an easier commute for her husband to, to New York City.
But then she got sick according to her testimony.
We have not seen her since her uncle went and animals. Carver and Axet went, was barely breathing.
Thank you. Anyone else for testimony?
It's not, I have something again, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Was she talking about animals living under the porch? That is not true because under the porch is have a skirting and there's a gate that's locked. So there's, that's impossible for any animal, like, like the animal she's saying to live underneath. There is no way for go underneath. There's no way to go through.
Well, I, I...
Maybe, maybe rats and I doubt it. I don't see no sign of that because I checked. There is no bird poop or no bird goes into that. Because I go up there.
Yeah.
Rest of it doesn't matter. It boils down to parking.
We're fine on that. I mean, that's something that if it's approved will be corrected. We have one more individual wants to give testimony. Ready? Raise your hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please state your name and address and spell your name.
Sarah McCormack, M C C O R M A C K. And I live at 523 South Irving Avenue.
You can proceed.
So my property is right next door to this property. And of course, I definitely want to see it rehabbed. I do not want to see it as an apartment. Parking is an issue. Parking is an issue for us in front of, on South Irving Avenue. There's, it definitely is a problem back there. I don't see where there's enough room to put the required parking. Of course, we want to be amicable if she would like to rehab it. But I do have this, I do have pictures of the animal, of the animal that lives under the porch. It's under the steps and there is not any skirting or anything on the steps. Again, definitely want to see it rehabbed. I was, she was, she did come up and clean up. It was horrendous. The overgrownness of, and the windows are, there was police there one day because the windows were broken. You know, neighborhood kids, because it is an abandoned property. I just recently purchased windows and I don't even want to put that much into my property because it is such a nightmare to have this property. But again, I do not want, wanted to be amicable, willing to help whatever you would need. But just please live there. We cannot have any more out of town landlords because that's what we deal with on the corner. But making it into an apartment is definitely an issue. Prior to that, as Janey said, we did have it as apartment and there was no parking. There were two different families at one point living there. Parking is definitely an issue. I do not see where it could possibly fit two, two cars or three cars in the back. Even with the garage down, it's very narrow. That's it.
May I make a motion?
Second.
Mr. Walsh?
I, I hope you're, you're good to the neighbors and, and you do what you say you're going to do. I vote yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Ms. Newcomb?
I'm going to have to say no based, just based on the parking.
Chairman Gattens?
I vote no. By a vote of three to two, you've been approved. Good luck with your project.
They didn't get one. You brought, you brought Paul Matessas. You didn't bring mine.